Good evening, it's seven o'clock, time for the Eastlime Planning Commission to begin. First order of business is roll call from right to left.
Nick Minnepace.
Cindy Collins.
Kirk Scott.
Rich Gordon.
Brian Baumbeck.
Tom Fenny.
Thank you. Time for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, are there any additions to the agenda?
Can I, is that the same?
Thank you. Yeah, it was time for a call for public delegations. Public delegations is a time when the members of the public are invited to speak to the commission about certain matters, items, referrals, or applications subject to a decision by the commission. A public hearing or in litigation may not be discussed. During delegations, the members of the commission will not directly answer questions or make comment. Anybody? Okay, thanks. Zoning liaison, Cindy, is anybody else able to attend the last zoning meeting?
I was.
Well, you did go.
Yes. It was a very brief meeting because the people there for the public hearing, one did not show and one had to reschedule. The only thing that came up is there was a proposal for a text amendment that was also chosen not to be truly addressed about political signs. I guess there was some murkiness of, because there is a statute, it's not really enforced right now, and they were considering shrinking it, but they decided not to really address it. It was, it was a very short meeting as a result of the, the two public hearings needing to be rescheduled. That's about it.
All right, thank you. Next up, ex officio from the Board of Selectment Office, Don McKenzie, do you have any updates?
No, sir.
No, okay, thanks. Next up, the planning director, Gary Gaisel, any updates?
Okay, it was time.
Okay. Subcommittees, nothing current. Chair Prozes Report, I can mention a couple of things, I guess some confusion about the training. Gary had sent out, if some people weren't, hadn't taken the training out, there's a, there's a link on the way, on the email that you sent, for clear, that you can, you can take if you were on the list of people who haven't taken the training.
Correct.
Okay.
So if you just take that training and just report back to us, Jess in our office, that the meeting was completed, all noted, and move forward.
It was, it was very informative, I really liked it, yeah. I know, I don't think you're going to spend three hours really enjoying talking, them talking about zoning law and affordable housing, but it was really good, yeah.
Okay, great. And we also, I think they sent out, we have March, we have training with the biannual training for.
Can I get the bar association?
Right, so I guess.
The use law.
Right, it's.
That will be available in March.
Mm-hmm.
We'll send out the response.
Yeah.
Just that, you can apply back to Jessica, let her know.
Right.
Send name to the registry.
Town Hall is going to do all the registration for everybody, so, good, great. Another thing I could mention, I guess according to our bylaws, we have to do the election for officers in December, or is there any?
That's correct for our bylaws.
Really?
If we have an ex officio here, so you can run the election of officers, give you that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I did have one thing, I didn't know if it mattered, but I just noticed here on the proposed zoning thing, does, like Sam isn't labeled as an alternate, does the alternate part matter for going to the zoning meetings?
The training only matters for voting.
I'm sorry, I just meant this.
They're coming to the zoning liaison schedule.
Yeah, I, I can't imagine it does, but I just wanted.
I don't think it matters.
Yeah. I just noticed that they had alternate for some of the other people, so I didn't know if that was important in some way.
We've sent alternates in the past.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're part of the rotations. Next up is the approval of minutes, the meeting minutes for November, of November 12th, 2024, the regular meeting minutes, were there any comments on the, on the minutes? I can, can I entertain a motion for them?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the November Planning Committee meeting minute, excuse me, meeting minutes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, any extensions? Nope. Six, zero. Next up, we will continue the public hearing that we started in November regarding the application of Niantic Management LLC with Joe Wren for a one-lot re-subdivision of approximately 7.08 acres of land zone, CA commercial and waiver request for sections, sections four, two, three, A through I of the Eastlime subdivision regulations on property located at 269 Flanders Road in Niantic. Mr. Wren, do you want to speak?
I'm Attorney Eric Parker.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
The rescheduling of your meeting, Mr. Wren, is another meeting reg, so we're dividing in time.
Okay.
I think the only, Mr. Gaisel may have some more information. Sure. The, if you recall, the major outstanding issue from last time was the form of the drain adjustment due to the fact that we don't have a development plan, and it left us a little bit unclear on how to present that drainage easement without meets and bounds due to the fact that, the one thing we're pretty sure of is it's not going to bisect the property, but beyond that, we didn't know where to place it. Mr. Gaisel was nice enough to connect me with counsel for the town, who looked at a couple of different options, and just this morning got back to me and said what we had back in November is acceptable, with the condition at approval that prior to beginning development, we need to provide meets and bounds, at which point we'll have an idea how the new parcel will be used. So we came up with a workable solution, and I think that was the only outstanding issue, which is why we continued the hearing.
But I did develop a memo, I was thinking of copying that.
Yeah, I got it by email, thank you.
Is that in?
The number of findings.
Cindy, is that, is that me or did I forget?
The records, noting the issues.
I'll just ask Gary for it.
They propose a motion for you to consider.
Mr. Gaisel? I don't mean to interrupt, but can I get one as well?
Almost.
Yeah, sorry. Thank you so much.
Condition five in that motion addresses the drainage issue, I'm sorry, not, three it was, five just in regards to pins and monuments, something that I noted in the past. Excuse me, a little bit of a village talk. But, I don't know, do you have any questions? Overall, I agree with the application, meets the regulations to the town of Eastlime subdivision regs. That being said, the only item that I did note was section five dash two, dash two G, the Erosion Sedimentation Control Plan. As they noted, there's no proposed activity, and it's something that cannot be waived, so I did condition that they be notified if submitted. And bond, provided satisfactory to the town engineer and/or planning commission prior to issuing ability permit, zoning permit, and starting the set forth. I would suspect, though, at that time, that the zoning commission would probably be the entity to hold that bond, as, once we move forward, in this case subdivided, there's really no other work with planning commissions here. Do, technically, for the zoning agency to be the agency holding that theme as well. But we can't waive regulations as such.
Do you have any further comments?
I have nothing further unless there's any questions.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any comments?
So basically, we're going to discuss, we're going to discuss, you know, we have the deadline for, it was open November 12th, so we have to close the public hearing by December 16th.
Chairman, I just also would like to note, open space department.
Right.
For noting, while we do not ask to request a specific waiver, they did note in note five on the plan set itself, that essentially, demonstrated by ZP, we subdivide the plan in note five indicates the commission may require open space in subdivisions of less than four lots or less than 10 acres. As the project, the subject property is less than 10 acres, but I-95 has no on-site water courses, and the existing site characters, which do not indicate that the gent is listed in section 7.2 of the subdivision regulations, either devious to me, dedication to open space.
I think Joe addressed that last time, that the purpose of that probably isn't a one-lot subdivision of this kind, and it probably doesn't make sense to have that requirement, but since we didn't request a waiver, but we wanted to make sure it's noted.
The other thing to note is that the lot was already previously subdivided back in 1993, is when this lot, existing whole lot, seven acres, was carved out. So, reviewing the regulations at that time, there was also a provision in the regs in 93 for open space dedication of not 10%. So it may have already been provided under that, they could have waived it without pulling that subdivision plan to see if it were in the OCON, that instead of deferred. I do not, but I think it was a particular case, I think, known on the plan, I believe the commission had a discretion to waive the open space dedication.
Is there a request for that, or is that just, just by note?
Not required. I think the note in the motion, that is not required.
I think that's the distinction, is just not required.
Anybody want more time to read? Yeah, I had a, I'm sorry, if I, I just, that one, so I might have been missing at the sun here, but under the municipal, excuse me, the water supply report, you are saying that, like, this obviously is, is being served by municipal water, and that the new proposed, like, offshoot would also be, as in here, like, that there is no reason to indicate that it would not be able to be provided, right? So, yeah.
That's actually, the whole easement thing is a lot of the utilities runs through that.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure I was understanding it correctly.
Anybody else have any questions?
And Mr. Gaisel, I actually, I think this is probably one for you. The erosion and sedimentary control plan, I guess I'm a little confused, and forgive me if I'm missing something very obvious here of why we don't have the plan now. I know, is it just because we don't know the exact nature of what the construction would be, like, but I guess it's more of like, so do we know, though, that building here, like, what would have to go into that? Like, is this the limitation that, like, if there was a building proposed on here, that we'd have to know, okay, this is going to require serious, like, I don't know, retaining wall or something like that for this, I keep forgetting the name of these, subdivision, yeah?
I think, if that retaining wall or that improvement required alteration of the city and town road, maybe any proposed site improvements, sure. In this case, we're not proposing any of those site improvements until they find a tenant, and you're ready to get a specific.
Yeah.
So, just like building a single-family home, we have conceptual plans that show building, so maybe some self-defense, coming in a check on, maybe as a, they could certainly throw them on here, something with building, although I don't know that they need to, because it's really, whether they control their proposing home site improvements.
Yeah. I just, I guess I'm still, I guess I still dropped back to it, I forget, because I'm just a little confused, because it would seem like there would be a possibility that depending on what you're building there, that that could require, well, that exactly, that you'd need to build some, a significant, like, erosion and sediment control plan, and I guess I'm, I'm just not, a little confused, because like.
I think if you look at the context of subdivision regulations.
Yeah.
If we're, to effectuate a subdivision, actually provide the land, if my activities are going to require construction of a road.
Yeah.
A retaining wall, yes, we're going to look at those specific activities as they relate to erosion and sedimentation controls.
Okay.
But if I'm not proposing a town road, or not having to do something to effectuate the subdivision, I don't need to propose any erosion controls.
Okay.
So we wouldn't necessarily look at that at all. It's just when they go to go do site development, make applications to zoning commission for a site plan approval, per the zoning regulations, they have to comply with erosion and sedimentation controls, which are virtually the same.
Right. Yeah, I, I guess I'm just not sure if I'm missing something with that, so forgive me.
It's more in the cases of when they're building public improvements, they're doing road construction, and that road goes up the side of the hill.
Yeah.
We're going to need to ensure that we have, I think, that's the fault in the planning commission, because we're responsible for that subdivision, kind of construction of that road.
Yeah, and we're, we're of the opinion, or the departments are the opinion right now, that the removal of that road for the subdivision isn't going to sincerely, seriously affect the erosion and soil, or, excuse me, isn't seriously going to affect the erosion and sedimentary control.
Removal of this driveway?
Yes.
No, it shouldn't, because it'll be a building on the back, it's on the parking, so, after an item with it. I suppose if they eliminated that, they would just then chase and give it the driveway access to the north there.
Okay.
Could that, the removal of that, now you have some disturbed area that may require some erosion controls and it's stabilized, but.
This is going to seem like a bit of an out of left field question, but this is technically going to rein here as, as commercial property, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, so are they going to be asked to comply with, because I know we have this, and if we are, our Board of Selectmen liaison might know about this a bit better, is that we have the, the proposal for pollinator pathway for commercial development for vegetation being native? Is that something that, like, are you planning to vegetate the area?
Well, there would be, the site development, that would be subject to that regulation, that I believe the zoning commission adopted that they use native planting.
Yes.
So, as they develop their site plan, they're going to have to accommodate for that requirement.
Okay, so I guess that does, yeah.
There are planting that they select, they should consider.
Yeah. Okay, so I guess that just says, do you plan to do anything with this property until, or is it just going to?
At this time, we're proposing no activity.
Okay, so you're not currently planning on, like, we're going to plant some trees along the road or anything? Because I, I obviously, I would assume we'd miss it, but I don't know if that's the kind of thing that people just assume, like, oh, yeah, we'll go plant something in there, or let it grow.
My client's planning no activity at this time, they would just like to subdivide it so that they can market it, and at some point in the future, based on that marketing, they anticipate having some activity to propose. But even the removal of the driveway is conceptual to show that the two parcels can handle it. There's not a current active plan to remove the driveway across the one parcel, no activity proposed.
Mr. Chairman, this, or this one, this is, forgive me on this, because I may just be pulling something out of the nowhere, but do we have any kind of plan or works in there for, for language that just kind of, we have an area like this that is going to be left alone, do we have something in there so it doesn't become overgrown with, say, like invasive species or anything? That's just, I don't know.
I don't believe so.
Yeah, it just kind of, it almost seems like going in hand with the, the native plant ideas to try and not let it be infested with something that's difficult to remove.
Sure, which I could certainly understand, we don't have anything in place that we allow us to, or something like that.
Yeah.
I would say, you know, we crack at the apples when they come in to develop the land.
Yeah.
You know, and owners just let their property get forested and go through cycles, sure.
Yeah, but I mean, with this notion, do, do we have a lot that we really do to enforce that they're going to be using the native plants as well? I mean, we obviously can recommend it, but.
Well, we have, yeah, the regulation that zoning commission adopted.
Yeah, I understand what we adopted, but do we have, like, a true ability to enforce that?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I don't, well, I've never seen it, I would say, here's a requirement, the zoning regs are black and white, you're supposed to plant things that are pollinator friendly, or.
I suppose you and I could talk about it a little later, because I know we're losing the plot a little bit.
Point being, is it against the privacy of zoning?
Okay.
Is the government mission to hold on, is the zoning force not to?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? You have any?
Nothing.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else, just to speak? So I guess at this point, we can entertain a motion to close the public hearing, or?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing, this time.
Thank you. Have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Okay, thank you. So now, we're going to discuss, I think we have to decide on two separate issues, the waiver requests and the actual subdivision application approval. I guess first off, the waiver request, were there any questions regarding the, looking for a request or waiver on?
I don't know.
Seven, two different sections, four, two, three, A through I.
Am I referencing this?
Were there any concerns or questions about that?
Mr. Chairman, I know everyone's here, but I just, I guess I can't really find anything, I just, I don't know. Is this, is this one, for those of you who have been or experienced, is this common to have this type of subdivision without currently a plan to do anything with it right now?
Yes.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Particularly unusual at this point. Were any other comments or questions on that? No other comments or questions, I can entertain a motion to take a vote on the waiver request?
All right.
Yes, Gary had written up a paragraph on that. I guess we can just.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a, a motion to vote on the application of the waiver request.
Okay, let's take a motion to approve, or, take a motion to approve.
Sorry, a motion to approve or deny the request, the, excuse me, the waiver request, I don't know if I need to deny it.
Go by, I guess, the, the actual sections, whatever Gary written up.
Sorry. The request from sections four, dash two, dash three, A, B, D, E, F, G, H, and I.
Just to clarify, is that a motion to approve or deny?
Oh, sorry, I def, I think I said both, but we'll go for a motion to approve it.
Approve it, okay. Do I, do I hear a second?
Second.
Or any comments or, or the discussion? All in favor of the motion to grant the applicant's request for a waiver from sections four, two, three, A through I? All, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any extensions? So, the motion passes six to zero. Next up, we can discuss the subdivision application, were there any discussion or questions? Is this, any comments, questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry, but is this different on here, the, the application of Niantic Management, I mean, I see just the one.
So, second to last page.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I was just looking at our agenda for it.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm just, the waiver, I hope the.
Okay, no, I see, I, I assumed it was on our agenda, forgive me.
Gary written up was the motion to approve with a list of different conditions that they have to abide by, at a later date. Were there any comments or questions?
Are we going to read this into the record?
Um.
Ken, I'm happy to read it on behalf of the commission.
Yes, please.
Thank you.
If you agree, you could just say so.
Say both of them.
So the motion would read as follows, now therefore, I hereby move to approve the application known as the application of Niantic Management LLC care of Joe Wren, P.E., agent for a one-lot re-subdivision of approximately 7.0 acres of land zone, CA, commercial, and a waiver request from sections four, dash two, dash three, A, B, D, E, F, G, H, I of the Eastlime subdivision regulations on property located at 269 Flanders Road, Niantic, Connecticut, accessories map number 31.0, lot number six, and the proposed re-subdivision plans, two-sheet drawing set, entitled re-subdivision plan prepared for Niantic Management LLC, 269 Flanders Road, map 31, lot six, Eastlime, Connecticut, by Joseph Wren, P.E., of Indigo Land Design LLC, dated July 29, 2024, and record subdivision map, land of Niantic Management LLC, tax map number 31, lot six, 269 Flanders Road, Eastlime, Connecticut, plan prepared by David A. Anino, LS, Anino Survey LLC, dated July 3, 2024, which is further subject to the following administrative requirements or required modifications to the site plan and/or other materials submitted in support of this application. Number one, pursuant to section five, dash two, dash two G, an erosion sedimentation control plan prepared in accordance with section 22A, dash 325 through 22A, dash 329 of the Connecticut general statutes, which provides proper provisions to out-of-the-control accelerate erosion sedimentation and reduce the danger from stormwater runoff on the proposed site shall be submitted and certified by the commission prior to the issuance of any building or zoning permit for the development of the site. Number two, an erosion sedimentation control bond in amount satisfactory to the town engineer shall be posted with the town in a form acceptable to the town of Eastlime Planning Commission prior to the issuance of any building permit, zoning permit, or the start of any site work, including but not limited to exploratory test pits, clearing, grubbing, filling, and grading. Number three, upon determination, sorry, and description of the final location of the proposed relocated drainage easement, the applicant shall file the drainage easement along with a revised map showing saying, signed, stamped, and sealed by a professional engineer and land server licensed in the state of Connecticut at a scale of 180 equals 40 on the land record. Paper copy shall be submitted to the planning commission. Number four, the applicable items shall, above shall be accomplished prior to the finding of the subdivision on the land records or other documentation of planning approval, and no site work shall commence until all applicable conditions are satisfied. And number five, pursuant to section eight, dash two of the Eastlime subdivision regulations, monuments and markers, quote, no building permit shall be issued until monuments and corner pins have been, quote, set. As such, financial guarantee or bond in the amount satisfactorily of the director of planning and town engineer for the installation of monuments and corner pins shall be filed with the planning commission in a form acceptable to the town of Eastlime, as no permanent markers or pins shall be installed until all construction, which could destroy or disturb the monuments, is completed. This approval is specific to the subdivision plan submitted as the application known as the application of Niantic Management LLC care of Joe Wren, P.E., agent for a one-lot re-subdivision of approximately 7.0 acres of land zone, CA, commercial, and waiver requests from sections four, dash two, dash three, A, B, D, E, F, G, H, and I of the Eastlime subdivision regulations on property located at 269 Flanders Road, Niantic, Connecticut, accessories map number 31, lot number six, and the proposed re-subdivision plans, two-sheet drawing set, entitled re-subdivision plan prepared for Niantic Management LLC, 269 Flanders Road, map 31, lot six, Eastlime, Connecticut, by Joseph Wren, P.E., of Indigo Land Design LLC, dated July 29, 2024, and record subdivision map, land of Niantic Management LLC, tax map number 31, lot six, 269 Flanders Road, Eastlime, Connecticut, plan prepared by David A. Anino, LS, Anino Survey LLC, dated July 3, 2024. Any changes in the subdivision plan shall require prior approval from the commission and/or the director of planning. Any changes to the development plan layout other than those identified herein shall constitute a new application. The owner-applicant shall be bound by the provisions of this application and approval.
So if we have a motion, we just say so, move.
So move.
Okay, thank you. Do you have a second?
Sorry.
Any other comments or questions?
Second.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any extensions? Motion passes six to zero. Thank you.
We actually repeat, how to may as well.
Next up on the agenda is zoning referrals, I don't believe we have any. Municipal referrals, none. Now we go to all business, subdivision regulations, section four, application submission procedure. I think Gary, you're going to talk to the attorneys of market, I guess, on that.
Yeah, I talked to the attorney of market, he is still working on reviewing that information, he's quite busy between reviewing what regulations, and.
This is all for?
So, he.
This is all previous ones?
In a month, has something back to us, so I anticipate by January, I think, we'll be able to start from the 12th of May.
Okay. Anybody have any questions or comments? Okay, thank you.
Do you think it'll be ready by January?
I'm hoping, we'll at least have his response, and then, if it requires significant changes, we could maybe.
Yeah. Thank you. Next up, we have new business. First on the agenda is the conveyance of open space for Nathan Hale, derived subdivision parcels owner, Nathan Hale, Commercial Association Incorporated. Gary, did you want to speak on that?
Yeah, so I wanted to bring this to your attention, and I'll, if we can take A, B, and C, because they're all of the same nature, these are open space subdivisions that, we had open space that was.
These are open space subdivisions that we had open space that was dedicated and was not reconvened to a third party or is being placed on. The successor wanted to address the issue and was bringing it to your attention. I think at the next meeting, I can give some more information on each of these together so you can know exactly where those parcels are. And I believe you can send correspondence, just to the landowner, putting them on notice that this parcel of land that they're holding is subdivision open space. And then we can begin working toward enforcement action on this to get this stuff properly committed. There might be a couple of places where we no longer have control of the land. I know, for instance, in the, we've heard this bird subdivision over there off the heat ret, ankle, ground circle in that area, there was some open space land that was on the last tax sale that got sold. I don't think that would be developed. Oh, but that's kind of the situation where that open space was supposed to probably have gone to the town or association. And now it did, and now it's in the hands of a private landowner and it's no longer accessible to the public. And that's okay. It's not just going to forever remain open space, but when the subdivision is approved, with the attempt, the open space is going to be publicly accessed. So. Don't look into these fine details. But nonetheless, I certainly think something moving forward with any subdivision we do approve that we ensure that the open space, when it's a part of the subdivision, it gets conveyed to the appropriate entity before the mylar is filed. And that also goes along with, as I pointed out, the monuments and markers. I had a professor there point out to me that. And I couldn't find any monuments and markers, but they didn't bond it either. So it's kind of, you know, time's passed. I don't know if we can go back on that if things pinned to monuments. But moving forward, we certainly we can ensure that we can provide a bonding for it. That way we'll love this stuff. So at the next meeting, I'll bring you more information on to the specific parcels. I know they're on listed here. You can go online and take a look at them. So I keep a record, the council on this. So I'll just keep you up to date as to progress on enforcement.
Thank you.
If I'm not sure that will require formal action in the division. So if that's the case.
Anybody else have any questions? We'll have more details at the next meeting. We'll discuss it further.
Okay.
So next up, I guess, there's the Orca's at Eastland subdivision request for a bond reduction.
Bond reduction.
Yes, I've got some information on that.
If we copy this relatively.
Yes.
JP Marine requested a reduction of the bond. So we currently hold three bonds. The first bond is an erosion sedimentation control bond in the amount of $125,000. The second bond is a, and that's in the amount of cash. The second bond is a cash bond in the amount of $118,289. That's for public improvements. And the fourth bond, it was a letter of credit in roughly. It was 1.4. 1,482,044. So that bond, that letter of credit was expiring last Thursday. So in order to ensure that there was bond placed, the carriers posted a cash bond for the difference amount of $397,000, $397,956. So in addition to the two cash bonds that we hold, the town engineer felt that that was sufficient for the remaining work that's left to be done, which is just going to be Pumpkin Grove. They put the final course of asphalt on all of Arbor Crossing. And I believe that will be coming forward probably next month for a favorable recommendation to the Board of Selectmen for road acceptance. Obviously, they have to come here first to accept those public improvements. So with that, we certainly felt that at least in order to get a bond in place, so we had cash and the town had surety that if they did go belly up, we could at least finish the last road, we have that in place. So essentially bringing this to your attention, but you would have to authorize the bond release and the reduction. Because if you didn't, I'd have to go back to them and say, hey, you can pony up a few more hundred thousand. So I would be just looking for a motion to reduce the bond for a total amount of.
Reduction by 243,289 to.
It should total.
Release of the letter of credit bond.
Right, the total bond should come to 783,640.
Is this letter that we're reading from? The letter that's right there? Who wrote that?
Town engineer, I think.
No, no, town engineer.
No, no, no.
This was Marine providing this.
Okay. Well, he wrote it to the town engineer.
Do we have something from the town engineer concurring with these, with this? There we go.
Oh, that was from previous bond.
Oh.
The town engineer gave you an.
Giving an email.
I got it.
December 3rd, 2024. I do expect it going down in cash, 430,000.
So we enter that as an exhibit?
We can enter it into the record.
Oh, okay.
The language of I'm good with it could be a little, little neater, but. I guess it, I guess it means he agrees, which is the important thing.
So maybe the email below that where I do spell it all out to him is how we wrote this down. Part of this. So we go back and forth as to what they need to do. The numbers are all in there.
So for an accountability point of view, if somebody said, how do we know this was legit? That would, that would, that would suffice.
As the only evidence of the town engineer's review of this is. I'm comfortable.
Okay.
About the only documentation from the town engineer is the email, I guess?
At this, yeah, regarding this matter.
So we'd be voting on the release of the letter of credit bond for 1.4, 1.4 million 82,044 as well as reduction in the cash bond to 430,919? And you argue, you said you were fine. Were you, you felt that was sufficient for the remainder of the project, I guess, to cover it?
Yes, that's why we had the town engineer review it.
Right.
That the numbers.
Is anybody else have any questions or? Any questions or?
I got some questions.
Any questions or comments?
I just, I mean, I guess this is probably a sligge, but is there a possibility of like waiting for more information about this one, some stronger clarification? Do you not feel it's necessary? Like, I just, I don't know.
I don't necessarily feel it's necessary because I also took hours directly. And that said, if you get more clarification, we'll have to wait another month. And then maybe, and the circumstances won't change. And it's not what they are.
Just to be clear, all this amount is used for the infrastructure development, right?
Yeah, all the public, the roads, the street trees, street lights.
And this is all the stuff that the town is providing, correct?
The developer puts it all in.
Yeah, yeah.
We request that they post a bond should they go out of business and we have to finish the construction of the road.
Okay.
So basically, in fact, they completed all the roads, we just reduced the bond.
Okay.
Any other questions or? Okay, I guess I can entertain a motion to approve the reduction in the bond and also to release the letter of credit. Do you have the amounts? 1.4882.
Yeah, the letter of credit is 1,482,044.
Do I have to do them separately or?
Was that?
I wasn't sure if we were doing them separately or together.
I think you would just motion to reduce the bond to the total amount of
Okay.
So. So we're just taking a motion on to allow the reduction of the cash bond? What do we have to do?
I would just allow a reduction of the public improvement bond as a whole. Because we currently hold cash. Because that will not all be in cash versus letter of credit.
Okay, do we have to put the specific amounts or?
I think it's good to note the specific amounts.
Okay.
So I can just double check.
Okay. Anybody else want to?
One day.
What do we have on hand now?
We have 243,289, 289 is the existing cash bond. And then they posted, they reduced.
So you're saying 674,208 minus 243,289? So is there a harm in pushing this? Are we under some time constraint to take action on this?
Well, I, well, the letter of credit expires, so we don't have 1.4 billion. Instead, they came in and they posted 312,630 for the cash in addition to the cash bond that we currently hold, which is in the amount of 243,289. So we add that together.
Thinking, I'm thinking of, I would, I would like to see it like a ledger.
In the total bond, I get the 555,999, but I can certainly break it down a little later and see back in next month.
Is there a harm to waiting? I mean, I know they probably want their money, but, right, or they want to get.
Again, it was a letter of credit.
It's a letter of credit.
The letter of credit expires.
And we have all the money we need, but then we're reducing by something and giving it back to them.
Correct.
Okay.
But we're going through the formalized process. We're going to have to back.
So we probably want to have.
So as I reminded you.
A ledger. Right, but it would be clear, there would be like a line item kind of statement of what exactly we're doing.
Sure, I can provide. Very similar to what I did previously back in 2013.
That's perfect.
All right, I will do that with the numbers. I guess to answer the question, we currently hold roughly 555,982.
Do we need a motion to table it or do we need a? I don't, I don't want to speak for the commission.
Any other questions or?
Do you, do you, do you feel?
I feel, I feel, who has thought it to table to the next meeting? That's, I'm fine with that. Anybody else have any? A bit of motion if you want.
Make a motion to table this for the January meeting.
Okay.
Till the January meeting.
Thank you. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Any other, any discussion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Aye.
You favor?
I'm in favor, yes.
So six in favor.
Anybody opposed?
No. Any extensions? Nope.
Thank you.
So six zero to table the discussion on the, on reduction till the next meeting. Okay, thank you. Next up on the agenda, the election of officers per our bylaws. We're supposed to reelect the, through the election of the officers for the chairman, vice chairperson, vice chairperson, and secretary. Yes, did you want to conduct the meeting or?
I'll monitor.
Do you want a mind?
Do you want your term?
Yeah.
Somebody has to take over while he's getting.
So you would turn the meeting over to myself or Don?
Okay, I'm not going to. Turn it over to Don.
So do we have any nominations for chairman for the next year?
I'd like to nominate Rich Gordon as the chairman for the planning commission. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
I believe we're supposed to ask if we have any other nominations on that.
Were there any nominations, I guess?
Are there any nominations?
Any other, any other nominations?
Yeah, asked three times.
Are there any further nominations? No, sir. All in favor? Nominated Mr. Carlson?
I don't know who Mr. Carlson.
Took his name, but sorry.
All in favor of nominating Rich Gordon?
Rich Gordon, sorry. All in favor of nominating Rich Gordon to be chairman for next year? Any opposed?
I guess I'll abstain since.
Can't vote for myself.
Five zero one. Five, five ayes, one extension.
Next up, vice chairperson.
Next, would be anybody nominated for vice chair?
Mr. Scott, would you like to serve as?
Sure.
Vice chair again?
Okay, just clarifying.
I'd like to nominate Kirk Scott as the vice chair for the planning commission.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Any other nominations for vice chair? Last and final, any nomination for vice chair? All in favor for, all in favor for Chris Scott to be?
I guess I'll, I'll second the motion.
Okay. All in favor of Chris Scott becoming vice chair? Who is it? Kirk. First time I've done this, guys.
We know you mean. Okay.
Are we all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
You're going to abstain?
He does not have to abstain. He can vote for.
Okay. Six zero, approved.
Secretary again?
What's the next position? Secretary. Any nominations for secretary?
Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I'll nominate Brian Bonback for secretary.
I'll second that.
Any further nominations for secretary? Again, any further nominations for secretary? Last call, any nominations for secretary? Do we have a second for Brian Bonback?
Yeah, I had seconded, yeah.
All in favor for Brian Bonback?
Aye. I'm staying.
Tom? Five approvals, one abstention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lessons closed. Thanks, Seth.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have the zoning liaison schedule that.
Do you have a, do you have a copy of that? Mister Chairman, I just want to say there's an error in the schedule. Is that April through 10th, April 24th, May 1st, and May 15th are in here twice with different people. I don't know if there's any meetings missing or if there just happen to be. Yeah, but there's like four meetings in here that are there. I don't know if that throws off, like how many are supposed to be. I don't know, does zoning not do a second meeting in August traditionally? Like, I know a lot of times they cancel them in the summer, but like. Oh, I see, yeah. I didn't even notice that for July as well. Yeah, so do we like need to fix that for the?
I can reprint it, I can just delete out most April and then middle.
I just, I think it throws off like how often people go because of that. It might, I don't know if we need to like have a new one done up just because I know like we've got some of the people going like, I think Tim is on here. I thought he was on here four times, but some people are in here three and some people are in two. I don't know if that's just a nature of how it's going to go for that one, but.
Sure, I mean, I can pull them out, see if it changes anything.
Okay. Yeah.
So I guess we'll have a new list for the next meeting, I guess?
Yeah.
It would be after the night, though. Brian would have to go.
Think that'll change, Brian, is his schedule for the night? Are you good? Okay. Then we should have a meeting before the 23rd, so.
No, I used to, but now that I'm going to start this, I might be able to. But we can figure that one out. I don't know, I mean, Mister Chairman, we're still able to like just like talk with people if we need to swap with someone or something.
You can talk, you can squish, you can.
I just, I don't, I don't know for some.
You can always watch the meetings on YouTube if you.
Yeah, yeah. Do we need to approve the schedule then or do we?
Need to approve or wait till the January meeting to, to do the changes? You might as well wait till January.
This, no, this, this is just.
Yep, right. For shame, for shame.
Okay, I think we have one more item on the agenda. So Twin Valley Lakes subdivision at Spring Rock Road and Green Valley Lakes Road. They have a request for a 90-day extension to file the milars. The judgment was entered June 30th. There was 90 days to file the milars. 9/28, a 90-day extension. The extension to file is extended to December 26th or they want to?
They want to extend it another 90 days.
From December 26th. There's one small, one line email. Did you have any issues with?
No.
With the extension? Right, yeah.
To do, they put it right prior to the expiration of the 90 days. I do know that they're doing wrong with their closing. They have also requested that the loan firm can transfer to the new landowner. So that's in the works. The weapon commission will be called special needs to face that. We'll take care of that, so that'll be moving forward. So I suspect once that's done sometime before in the month, they'll be closing the property.
Thank you. Anybody have any comments or questions?
Is there any limit to how often they can keep requesting? Like, let's say, I don't know if, hopefully not in another 90 days they request it. Is there any?
Two extensions in 90 days.
Okay, but this is a third extension, is it not?
This is the second.
You mean they have the 90-day entered in for June 30th?
That's the second.
It's their second request, 90 days.
Okay. Okay, I must just be misreading it. My mistake.
That's the original.
Yeah, they have 90 days to file the milars and they requested their first 90-day extension.
I see. I, yeah, I just misread it as the, okay, I thought that was the extension on that one. That's my mistake.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? I can entertain a motion to approve the 90-day extension of the milar filing.
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Any extensions? Nope. So move this past six nothing to extend the, send a 90-day extension to file the milars. I think that's it for the agenda, so I can entertain a motion to adjourn.
So motioned.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor of adjourning? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.